Federal City Council Meeting to Order. First item on the agenda is roll call.
Councilmember Barnes?
Here.
Dumbuia?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Rowan?
Here.
Vance Luce?
Here.
Teal?
Here.
Mayor Spooner?
Here. And a pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh...item number two is approval of the agenda. Does anybody have any? No moved.
Second?
A motion by Rowan, second by Vance Luce to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The agenda is approved. Item number three, a presentation of proclamation this month is infants remembered in silence. Do we have someone here? Hello? From the office of the mayor of the city of Faribault. Whereas infants remembered in silence and many other nonprofit organizations work with thousands of parents over Minne- Minnesota and across the United States who have experienced the death of a child in pregnancy and early childhood. Whereas many parents live in, deliver in, and have a child die in and bury their child while in this community. Whereas infants remembered in silence, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization founded in 1987 to offer support to parents whose children have died of miscarriage, ectopic pregnancy, moral pregnancy, stillbirth, neonatal death, birth defects, sudden unexplained death of a child, sudden infant death syndrome, illness, accident, all other types of infant and early childhood death. Whereas in 1988, President Ronald Reagan proclaimed October as National Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month in the United States, honoring the lives of children who have gone too soon because of their grieving parents, siblings, grandparents, family members, friends, lives who forever be changed by the heartbreaking death of a child. Whereas bereaved parents around the world remember their children annually in their homes with small gatherings on October 15th with lighting of the candle at 7:00 p.m. Families remember their child or children around the state and across the nation. This proclaiming proclamation unifies these parents in a tribute to their children. Whereas, in honor of thousands of children that die each year in Minnesota, infants remembers in silence respectfully request October 15th to be recognized as pregnancy and infant loss in remembrance. Now therefore, I, Thomas J. Spooner, of Faribault, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, October 15th as National Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month.
Mayor Spooner, and thank you to the council, excuse me, for this. It's something that I'm very proud to have. Faribault will be a part of this, as well as other cities that have taken that step forward just to acknowledge the people that are struggling. And so we thank you very much, and we thank you, Mayor.
All right, item number four, approval of the minutes of September 23rd.
Spooner?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve September 23rd. Second?
I have a motion by Dumbuia, second by Barnes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Uh, item number five, a request to be heard. Vicki Olson, 1025 St. Paul Avenue. Please come forward.
Hi. I am standing up. My name is Vicki Olson. I live across from Trump's apple orchard, Delicious Apples, and I am a fourth generation Faribault resident. I also spent up to thirty years, almost, as a German teacher here in Faribault, part of the Wurzberg Exchange, if you're familiar with that. Um, I'm, well, I was holding in my hand a prop. It was the delicious Faribault water. And this is sourced from the Tuah Aquifers in Faribault. And I fear that the decision to allow a data center near our city limits will only bring negative results to our community. Um, you cannot promise me that these machines won't decrease our well water supply. You cannot promise that. You cannot guarantee that the wastewater will not pollute our land. You cannot guarantee that. You cannot state for certain that our electric costs will not go up to help this project. You cannot state this for certain. You do not know for a fact that the noise level will be tolerable. You do not know this for a fact. You cannot assure us that any or all of these negative results will not happen. Impact of data centers on other communities, um, has warranted my fears. I have read about the impact on other communities online before I came here to present tonight. Your names will be on this project. I want you to remember your names will be on this project. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. All right, we have no one else on the list, so we will move on to consented agenda items, 6A through 6U.
Mayor Spooner?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve 6A through 6K and 6M through 6U.
Second?
Yeah, so wait, no, I'm confused.
I'm just omitting L.
L?
Pulling it?
Are you gonna pull it, or would you like discussion?
You want discussion?
Oh yeah, I would like to know why.
Yeah.
I'm just not in support of it, so I'm just voting no. That's all I'm...
Have to pull it first.
Oh, then I'd like to pull it.
Yeah, wanna pull it. Right?
All right, now Mayor Spooner.
Yes.
Member Rowan pulling, uh, item 6L. I'll make a motion to approve agenda items 6A through K.
Second?
Um, is there any further discussion on L? Well, all right, I'll do it that way if you want. Uh, we have a motion by Ross, second by Vance Luce, uh, through 6A through 6K and 6L through 6U. Excuse me. M through U, excuse me. L is being pulled. All right, M through U.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. All right, let's have some discussion on 6L. Why would you like it pulled, Mr. Rowan?
I'm not gonna support it. I don't think it's in the public's best interest, convenience, or necessity.
Right?
Yes.
For me, my question was, I had a question that was directly to the Antony. Because the foundation, Faribault Foundation, and going into a contract with the city. So I was wondering whether this is, there is no legal implication.
The, the foundation is just acting as the funding entity to basically pay for the consultant. The $10,000 is not the full cost of the consultant for the land trust. The $10,000 that's part of this resolution and the contract is purely for specifying land trust consulting services. So, um, that is, that is what it's laid out there for. It's not interfering with any of their existing agreements with the city. And, uh, it's, it's, uh, it kinda is what it is. It's a pretty straightforward agreement in that it's $10,000 towards the services. Um, but it's not ongoing funding for any sort of entity or anything.
Yes, I als- I, I was also thinking because, um, we have a draft. You say in the, uh, in the agreement that we have a draft, uh, land trusts, establishment, stuff that is coming up, correct?
That's part of the consulting agreement that the foundation would be sighing, signing with a consultant.
Yes, when I went through the mission statement of the foundation along with the timber, according to this, this resolution. Um, and also they, you talk about, um, other organization. Do you, do they have like, uh, any memo between each of those organization? Because I didn't see that.
No, so there's not been anything formed yet. So this is just the foundations at the very beginning of working with a group of community partners of which the city and the HRA has been part of um, to basically say, is this something we want to move forward with? And the answer from that group has been, yes, we want to move forward. So this agreement is to give the foundation $10,000 to put towards a $20,000 contract with a consultant to basically, you know, do, the scope of work includes essentially looking at what are the best recommendations for forming a land trust in Faribault? Um, what does a board of directors look like? What do those founding documents look like? Um, applying for 501(c), uh, to create a 501(c)(3) and the legal advice that would go along with that.
Not too clear to me, but yeah, I would like other people to talk.
Hey, Mr. Ross.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm looking at the resolution as it's written and in the package that I downloaded this afternoon. Second to last parafor, paragraph that says now therefore it be resolved that the city of Faribault that council 43090 is increased by 10,000. Probably a typo in there somewhere.
It's actually not. I was trying to involve a budget amendment with this at the same time that it's approving the agreement. And so that's the paragraph that is for the budget amendment. So council is council budget. That's, that's your budget. 43, I know, 43090 is expert and professional services. It's increasing that line item by $10,000 so that there's the budgeted authority within the council budget to pay $10,000 for the contract.
Thank you.
Yep. So trying to do two things at once.
Well, I, I don't know what my fellow council member always think, but I was thinking if we can table this for discussion and session. Because our past work session did not really throw light on some of these organization. Like, I didn't knew that we would have the chamber involved and other organization that was not listed in the resolution. So I would like us to table this because I just haven't understand it yet, but if you guys would be thinking of voting, no problem with that, but I would like to table it for future discussion. This is a good initiative. Yes, I'm making a motion to table it.
I'll second. Right. I'm gonna vote against that. I think that this is just the funding for getting the consultant to go ahead to lay the groundwork for a potential land trust. We don't know if we're even voting on that, but we're doing the groundwork and the basis for that. And we don't even know what the actual board of directors would look like. I don't, I'll be honest with you, I don't want this to be a city-run thing. This should be an independent group. So, but this, if you read that report from the housing community, the national, the city, we had that, it just stated that it's good for municipalities to help kickstart the land trust. Not there, should be there involved. Talk, yes.
Um, I'm not in favor of tabling it either. I'd like to get past this tonight, in fact. Um, the number one issue in, in Faribault that we all think is the number one issue is housing. And this is one small baby step towards getting affordable housing in, in Faribault. This, it's, it's way too important.
All right, hang on.
Mayor Spooner, I agree with you and councilmember Teal. It's also been an HRA agenda to help the housing community. This topic has been brought up, so I think it's a great collaboration for the city, HRA, and other entities. Get the chamber of Faribault Foundation to get involved, and I think this is a good way to support it and get it started.
Yes, hold on.
Um, I, yeah, Mayor, um, I, I just heard you say that, uh, you don't know if the recommendation from this study will be accepted or not. And, um, that's exactly the reason why I want us to table this, to make sure, um, that if we are spending money on consultancy, we should be able to actually get the, um, the value of the money that we are putting in. I am honestly in support of having affordable housing in Faribault. But then I want us to, I, I want to have clarity on some of the steps because sometimes, um, when we are eager to do things without having all question answered, we might end up not doing it at all. So, um, this is exactly the reason why I want us to table this because we don't know if the re- the fundings, if we have a funding that conflict with our, uh, HRA, some of HRA policies, the council might end up rejecting this, and we have put money into it. So I, I just want us to have more answer because there is more question right now than answer.
I think we understand your point. Anybody else have a comment on this? I don't wanna call a question. All those in favor of tabling, uh, 6L, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Mayor Spooner?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve, uh, Resolution 2025-261, which is 6L.
Second?
I have a motion to approve 6L, uh, by Vance Luce, second by Barnes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes. We are moving on. Thank you for your input on that topic. Public hearings tonight, we have none. Items for discussion, Resolution 2025-257, supportive of a new passenger rail service. Jessica Kinzer.
Yes, I also feel like you could present about this one, Mayor Spooner, since you were at the same meeting. Um, Mayor Spooner and I met with All Aboard Minnesota, uh, which is a nonprofit group that is, um, working to develop new rail service within the state of Minnesota. Uh, they have a request that they are asking a number of communities who would be impacted by a potential service line between the Twin Cities, St. Paul specifically, and Kansas City, Missouri, of which Faribault would be part of that, um, to ask the state to, um, apply to the federal government, uh, to basically get the study underway, um, for this. So it is not any funding from the city or any cities of support of this. It is basically asking the state to take the first step and to put forward some money. There are two active bills, um, with the House Transportation Committee, with the Senate Transportation Committee that, uh, will be brought up in the next section, session, or, um, they will die. And so this is a resolution of support to move those forward.
Just to add, um, I was at this meeting with Jessica Kinzer, and I've told them straight up that we have no money. And frankly, our train depot is a very good restaurant, and that's not going anywhere. So, um, if this comes to fruition someday, they're gonna have to figure it out because our budget right now, it's not gonna help.
I just have a comment. I, right away, I was skeptical, but I know we're trying to increase transportation, um, bring costs down. Working in rail myself, rail is very hard to regulate. There's federal, there's state guidelines. It's not a big moneymaker for, um, when pedestrians, people, pedestrians ride it. It's just a lot of rule, uh, web of rules and oversight, so I myself would not support it.
Right? So there's, is there gonna be any like, are they gonna come back in five years and say, all right, we need 150 grand?
They, they did not talk about any of that in our meeting with them, that this truly would be federally and state funded if it were to ever come to fruition.
This is truly just a resolution in support of the project. Yes, Mr. Ross.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-257.
Second?
You support it?
Support it.
Just to support. I think they already have an existing rail, right?
Yes. Correct, it would be on the existing rail. All those, we have a motion by Ross, second by Vance Luce for Resolution 2025-257. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
That motion passes. On to resolution.
Said you weren't in support of it, but...
He was in support.
What's that?
You were in support, correct? Yes.
Yeah, but you weren't, but you just voted you were in support.
Oh, I said I did wanna do it. And I...
No, I got the impression you didn't.
No, I just said it's gonna be, it's frankly, it's on layman's terms, it's no skin off our back.
Okay, I'm, I'm fine with it, but I just misunderstood your position.
None of us are gonna be up here when this comes to fruition.
I agree.
So, I, I was clear on that, but... Uh, Resolution 2025-262. Heather Slecta, cannabis microbusiness.
Yes, Mayor, council, this has been probably two and a half years in the making for a cannabis license. So, uh, Michelle Keller, on behalf of Faribault Greens, submitted an application, uh, for cannabis microbusiness out at, uh, 1512 30th Street Northwest. Um, they've already been issued a license number by the state. That's kind of that first step for them. Um, and so that has been approved. Um, this cannabis microbusiness allows for, I think there's like 13 different items that she can do or they can do out at, um, Faribault Greens LLC. Um, it has been approved, um, by the planning. It's in the correct zoning area. Um, she's met all those requirements, and she's in the process of getting some, um, building improvements done. Um, so once those are complete, we'll be able to, she'll be able to, um, apply at the state, uh, for her inspection and licensing, um, approval on their end. Um, and then it'll come back to the city. We'll be able to check all of our boxes off, and, um, she will be able to open their, um, microbusiness. The first, first in the city of Faribault. So if you have any questions, I will gladly answer. Or Michelle is here if you have any other questions as well, so.
Mayor Spooner?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-262.
Second?
I have a motion by Ross, second by Vance Luce to approve, to approve Resolution 225-262. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item number C, Resolution 225-263, a new on-sale liquor license.
Um, so yes, the Depot Restaurant LLC, doing business as Depot Bar and Grill, has submitted an application for a new on-sale taxicating liquor license and Sunday liquor license. Um, ownership is planned to be changing on around October 27th, and so part of those, uh, part of that process is a new liquor license. The background check has been approved as well as the, um, insurance. Uh, so this will go to the Alcohol and Gambling Enforcement for final review and approval. So if there's any questions, I can answer those. Otherwise, the new owner, Tony, and, uh, current owner, Jeff, are here, so.
Thank you, Mayor. Just for my own education, is there a fee for this? Or is it covered under the, uh, liquor license amount?
Um, so what we'll do is, our liquor licenses are prorated, so we'll prorate the fee for the rest of this year and then refund that amount to...
That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Uh, yeah, we don't, not double-dipping on that, so.
Thank you.
And then it'll come back for...
But I wondered.
Mr. Teal?
Uh, please do not get of, get rid of the blackened Cajun chicken sandwich. It is so good. It is...
Kind of ironic, I was telling Tony right now, back in 1991, that Dean Purdy as the mayor called him, uh...
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right.
I did ask those questions, like, are you keeping?
We will entertain a motion on this resolution.
No moved.
Second?
Motion by Teal, second by Rowan to approve Resolution 25, 2025-263. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item D, Resolution 2025, approval of a variance for a small dwelling. City planner Leslie McGilveray. Revoce, where I don't do in that.
That was amazing.
Been a long time since you've been here.
It has been quite a time, so I'm pleased to be in front of you today, and I'm pleased to be bringing this resolution before you. So this is indeed a variance for the smaller dwelling unit size at 301 Central Avenue, which the planners had the wonderful opportunity to be able to, uh, tour. The applicant is Mr. Nord Johnson. The owner of the establishment is Faribault Downtown Central LLC. As mentioned, 301 Central Avenue, and the request is for a variance. This is location map. We have to familiarize yourself with the building downtown, should you not be familiar. Um, the request is to allow one existing apartment to be no smaller than 368 square feet. The request is to facilitate a previously approved plating of the property into three parcels, which became before you in June of this year, if you'll recall that. Um, the three parcels are shown on your screen, slot one, two, and three. And as part of, uh, the, the discovery of, of, of building, of plating and permitting, the area that sites that's, you, you don't see my cursor arrow, so I'll describe for you. Um, the area that's outlined in the blue bubble is the area that we're speaking about. There is a penetration between the walls of the two buildings. So that violates current fire code, um, in the plating process. So this area right here, where you can see the label that says, that has the box of the unit five, that's going to be filled in. The area above it, um, the hallway, there will be a fire door created. And because of that, the area that says 235 square, point 28 square feet, that will become a part of the adjoining building's unit. And while that, and then that results in a, uh, a smaller-sized resulting apartment. So as you can see here in this illustration, um, the building are addressed accordingly. Four units were on the upper floor of 301. There will be, uh, three units in this location. This shows out the circle where the fire door will be between the two platted properties. And then with the, the far right, you'll see three additional, um, apartments as, as, uh, shown. So the proposal meets the criteria for granting a variance. The building code allows residential units to be smaller than the minimum proposed. They comprehend some downtown master plan, both support this and, and investment for an active downtown. This, this granting this var- variance would facil- would facilitate this as well as provide additional housing options. Sometimes microapartments are something that are desirable and, and sometimes in short supply. So on the result, we recommend that the city council approve Resolution, Resolution 2025-260 based on the criteria and by needs and the ordinance. And I'm available for questions.
Yep, any questions for staff? All right, yes, Mrs. Kinzer.
One thing that I would just like to point out, because I had a question about this, is if you're a registered rental, what is, what is it that you have to be? And so I was looking at that, um, for an efficiency unit with one to two occupants, it's a minimum of 220 square feet. With three occupants, a minimum of 300.
With three occupants, a minimum of 320. So this would fit what it requires to be a registered rental from square footage side?
Is that from the FHA handbook?
No, that's our, that's our rental inspection checklist.
But that's all, but we're based on the... No, it's not FHA, HUD, HUD, I'm sorry, HUD.
Yeah, I don't, I, I can't answer that.
Initials mixed up, so.
But...
I think, yeah, I, yeah, 'cause our codes are based on HUD, I'm...
All right, any other questions?
Mayor Spooner? I make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-260.
Second.
I have a motion on Resolution 2025-260 by Vance Luce, second by Barnes, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. Tonight, we have no bids. Board, commission reports, announcements, project updates. All right, we're gonna close, and a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion by Ross, second by Dalmouya, all those in favor signify by saying aye.